Indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number three, public input. Do we have any public input? Thank you. Uh, number four, do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. And item number five, the mayor's report. Uh, I just wanted to mention that Chris gave me a tour, Chris Lynn home, uh, ten days ago, two weeks ago, uh, around town. And I was very impressed, impressed with our infrastructure and what Chris and his, uh, all of his associates do to keep them up. And, uh, I was also reminded that those are those things that, uh, we have done a good job, I think, as a city of, of focusing on infrastructure and we need to want to continue that. Um, every place he took me, I realized that if that stopped functioning, we would be in trouble very quickly. And, uh, so anyway, great job, Chris, and, uh, the, all of our, uh, employees of the city. And, uh, I really appreciate that. Um, item number six, we have a consent agenda. And these three items are routine and enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member requests. They will consist of the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 6th, 2022, payroll ordinance 5366, and purchase quarter ordinance 5367. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some would like.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion. Seeing no discussion, we'll ask our city clerk to please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Sam?
Yes.
Heathering? Yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Horwitz?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The, uh, motion is approved. Item number seven, appointments. Um, and administrator, do we have any appointments this evening?
We do not this evening.
Thank you. Item number eight, planning and zoning. We have a planning and zoning, uh, report. And we do, welcome, Jordan.
Good morning, council. Uh, planning and zoning will meet on June 28th. It's next Tuesday at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Uh, the public is welcome to attend. It's regular meeting. There's no delay.
Are questions for Jordan? Seeing no questions, thank you, Jordan. Next, we will go to item number nine. Is there any old business that we need to consider this evening?
There is not.
No old business? We will turn our attention to item number 10, new business. Item A, the 2021 financial audit, and then we'll call on David. And, uh, I believe we have an auditor that will be joining us, uh, through Zoom.
Yep. So we're getting set up here. So Danielle Hollinshead, uh, she is the lead auditor for Adams Brown. Uh, she's joining us via Zoom. Uh, she's been gracious enough to give us that opportunity. Um, shall we go over the city's 2021 audit and will be available for questions?
All right, Danielle, can you hear us?
Thank you.
So it sounds like she can hear us, but we can't hear her. How about now? Can you talk? One second. I'm going to do exactly what I did earlier. This is why I don't pass that. I'm going to start this meeting over. One second.
He's going to have to start the meeting over in a second. Hello, hello, hello. Hello, hello, hello. Danielle, can you hear us now?
Yes, sorry. It kicked me out, but I, I lost my, uh, email.
That's no problem.
Uh, can, can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay. And am I up?
You are.
All right. I'm going to share my screen here. Oh, it says I can't.
There you go. You should be able to now.
Okay. There we go. Can you see my audit report?
We do not. She's most, so she should be able to.
David, is that, is it, is it a reporters at the letter thing?
Does it show now?
Yep. It is there now.
All right. Okay.
The letter.
Well, I appreciate you, um, all working with me here and allowing me to do this. We coaching us softball, and we've got softball, I feel like every night of the week. So, um, the, I'm going to go ahead and start with the governance letter. And if for any of you that don't know me, I'm Danielle Hollinshead. I'm a principal with Adams Brown, um, and I've been on the audit for a few years now. So I think I've seen a lot of you in the prior years. Um, so hopefully you guys have this in front of you as well and have had a chance to kind of glance through it. The, the governance letter is, um, where we put kind of our recommendations for management. We also go through any significant audit matters that we had during the audit. Uh, there was one new standard that went into play for the business type fund audit report. Uh, nothing major. It just had to do with how you account for interest costs on projects. Uh, there was nothing new that went into play for the regulatory basis audit. Uh, this letter also goes through if we had any corrections or uncorrected statements. Uh, it goes through if we had any disagreements with management. We didn't have any of those. Uh, and then on the very last play page is where we go through our audit recommendation. We just had two minor ones, uh, just, uh, an accounting reimbursements for expenses, making sure they show those as cash receipts instead of, um, expenses, so you can see the whole picture. And then also any invoices, reviewing those at the end of the year to make sure they're, they're recorded as accounts payable in the correct year. Uh, and then at the bottom, it, we had a material weakness this year. Uh, and this is just in regards to the business type activity audit report. It has nothing to do with the regulatory basis financial statement, which is the financial statement that's actually on the whole city. Uh, but this is in regards to construction in progress. And, um, the Stockholm project was still going on. So there was some, um, invoices that needed to be accounted for in there, as well as an AMI project, uh, that also needed to be picked up as construction progress at the end of the year. And those were just missed. Uh, and then I'm going to jump over to the, um, let's see if I can pull the right one up here. This, we have two different audit reports on, on the city. The, this first one is on just the business activity funds. So it does not show the whole government. It's also on a full basis. Um, your other audit report is on regulatory basis, which is basically cash basis. So, um, it's what comes in and goes out is in your report. This one does do full accrual accounting though. Uh, so this opinion letter, the auditor's report did change this year. So they kind of made it easier for you to find exactly what you're looking for. Right in the first paragraph now, you can find what opinions we, we issued on the auditor's report. We do give a qualified opinion on this because, um, there's some additional accrual adjustments that must be done in order to get a full unmodified opinion. Uh, you have to actually do an actuarial on your health insurance, and it's costly. And since the city is not doing a full accrual accounting report, it's not really necessary. So we do issue a qualified opinion for that reason. But, um, in regards to everything else, you receive, um, a clean opinion. So it's just for that one piece. Um, everything else we believe is materially, is materially stated. I'm not actually going to go through this audit report. I, I, since it's only a part of the financials, I, I'm not going to, um, spend too much time on it. But I would recommend if you would like a recap of what happened, any financial highlights. Management does have to put a management discussion and analysis together on this audit report. So you can go through and read and see the different highlights for why, um, the numbers were what they were this year. So I'm going to jump over to the regulatory basis financial statement. And this is done on cash basis, is basically what it is. Uh, and you approve a GAAP waiver every year, allowing this to be done on this, um, accounting standard. And so again, on page one is our independent auditor's report. And we give you an adverse opinion on GAAP because you are approving two-way GAAP. And then right here in the third paragraph is where we give you an unmodified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. And that's the highest opinion you can receive, um, and it's the cleanest opinion you can receive. We basically say there's no material misstatements in the financials. Um, on the next page, we go through the responsibilities of management, what they have to do to, to combine these financial, or put these finances together. And then what, um, our responsibility as the auditor is, and what we exactly look at, um, throughout the audit procedures. And then on page four, this is the financial statement that we actually issue the opinion on. It's a one-page financial, because you guys pool cash, um, and all your funds are put together. At the end of the year, you had 10,453,000 of unencumbered cash balance. And as you can see from the prior year, of 9.6 million, that's almost a 758,000 increase in unencumbered cash. And so I was kind of just going through the funds to see specifically where that increase came from. And you're going to see it mainly in your general fund. And, um, in the back of the report is each detailed fund. Um, and so I kind of just went through to remind myself why it increased. And a lot of it had to do with that Stockholm mistake. You had over 560,000 expenditures last year that dropped your cash balance. Um, you didn't have, you did have some this year in, in that project, but not near as much. So that helped increase your, your cash balance. The next several pages are the footnotes to the financials. Uh, we also look at compliance with Kansas statutes, and we did not have any violations this year. So you're not going to see anything in there. Again, there was no, um, additional accounting policies or changes to accounting policies. So you're not going to see anything major for footnotes, um, this past year. I do like to point out on page 14 where you're at for your long-term debt schedule. And, uh, at the end of the year, you had 6.3 million, um, in long-term debt, and you are scheduled to pay that off in 2047. And then on page 15 is your budget to actual statement, um, and you don't have any violations, any budget violations. You can see you're, you're well under most of your funds, um, in budget authority. And then the remaining pages are the additional funds, statements, so you can kind of get a better idea of what you spent compared to the prior year. And as you can see down here, I have it highlighted where that big change was and, um, why your cash went up so much in the general fund. Um, and it's mainly due to, like I said, that Stockholm mistake project. I would say, I'm not going to go through any of the funds in detail unless there is one that you have looked through and you have any questions, and I'd be happy to, um, answer them. But that is pretty much the, uh, audit presentation. Any questions for me? I can't see you, so you'll have to speak up.
Questions, uh, from the council? Okay, so seeing any questions? Thank you. Uh, anything else, David?
Nope, I'm listening.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Danielle.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys allowing me to do this remote. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, David. Um, I guess, did you need, we have a recommendation to accept the 2021 audit as presented. Is there a motion to that?
Some would.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion on the recommendation? So no discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Post no. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Council, we will now move on to item B, the Old Mill and Swedish Heritage Museum Budget Presentation. And happy to, uh, call on Michael Chambers. Welcome, Michael. And Lenora, is Lenora here as well?
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. It's good to see you.
Thank you, Lenora.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for having us this evening. I am Michael Chambers. This is Lenora Lynam, Lynam, the executive director of the Old Mill. And, uh, just wanted to give you a, uh, little history lesson of what's taken place over the last year at the, at the mill. I think all of you have probably a copy of the presentation that I sent in. Um, the board and staff has changed a little bit over the last year. Um, we are still recruiting new board members as well. Uh, but they're all listed here on, um, on your sheets in front of you. Um, over the last year, some of the things that we are really the most proud of are the fun things that happened at the mill. So there was Heritage Christmas, which has happened for many, many years, um, at the, at the mill. And we were able to do that again this year. There was a concert series that took place in the, um, Swedish Pavilion, and that was well attended and, and enjoyed by lots of people. Um, genealogy workshops have continued to happen even through the pandemic. Those were moved from in-person events to virtual events. Um, and we all know how those go. We just solve for those. I think probably all of us have become experts in Zoom over the last, uh, few years, so. Um, and camp, campground visits have continually increased over the last several months. So that's fun to see people enjoying the natural aspect of the mill and the properties around. And then school groups, um, Lenora was just telling me that there were 150 children yesterday?
Last Friday, we had 100, 100 kids from the Solano Y that came. Um, John Presley is one of our demos with Wood Garden. Um, Ericson kind of sometimes comes and does spinning. Jim, um, staff does corn grinding, so we provide programing for them. Tomorrow, we have 50 types of kids coming from, um, Assyria. And then next month, we have kids coming from some summer programs. So we've got a full summer.
So lots of groups of kids coming from surrounding communities. Um, we're also really proud of the work that took place last year, and there was a lot of it. Um, the physical spaces at the mill have been, uh, neglected, to say the least, over the last 20 years for sure. And the physical property really is starting to resemble, uh, some of the, or reflect, rather, some of the, the neglect. Um, so there's been a lot of physical work around the, the facility. So, uh, there's lots of cleaning and refreshing of the physical spaces. Um, we have, uh, done some policy work where we've created employee handbooks and that sort of thing. We've established a collections policy and committee that's looking at all of the, uh, things that the, that the mill owns, uh, and trying to determine which of those are worth keeping and which of those need to find new homes. Um, we are also reviewing and evaluating all of the buildings and properties. And I included several pictures for you so that you could see the sort of deteriorating, um, nature of some of the, of the properties. Um, all of those create opportunities for us in terms of fundraising and grant writing and that sort of thing. Um, some funds have already been secured for the, um, tuck pointing work on the mill. Some of that's happening like as we speak. Um, asbestos mitigation has taken place on the old locomotive. Um, and we've started the process of strategic planning, of trying to figure out what purpose the mill, um, and the properties are going to serve for the community of, of Lindborg and for, um, the larger region. So, uh, that's just some of the work that's taken place over the last 12 months. Um, a look, a look ahead. So coming soon, there is some building and facility repairs that are, um, ongoing now and more than can be coming. Uh, one of the things that has to happen pretty quickly is guttering on the mill, the actual, um, mill, which is one of two existing roller mills left in the country. So, um, all of these things seem like minor details, but are really important for, um, preserving this entity in our community. Um, campground upgrades. So campground, the revenue for the campground has continued to increase pretty much every month, which is really wonderful. That means new people are coming to our community and staying here, um, and exploring the, the area around. One of the things that we've learned that would really help the community, uh, or help the campground is Wi-Fi. We all use Wi-Fi all day, every day, but it doesn't exist at our, at our campground. So something as simple as that would, um, from the feedback that we received, would help our campers and would generate more, um, traffic there. Um, gift shop improvements. So if you've been to the mill, the gift shop is, is really small. Um, but the material that's in there really is sort of a celebration of the things that happen in our, in our community. So looking at improving that space, creating new exhibits, and hiring professional development and marketing staff so that we can really, um, celebrate all of the things that are happening at the, at the mill and keep things moving ahead in terms of, uh, new projects. Um, the, the pictures, um, are kind of sad and depressing. Actually, if you look at them, the windows are falling out in some of the buildings. There's leaking roofs. There's flooring that is tripping hazards. Um, these, uh, these steps that you see, I can remember as a child running up and down them because they go on both sides of, of the wall. Um, and there's a, a particular word for that. I don't remember what it is. Is it style or something like that? And there was a song that we used to sing in elementary school. And our teacher took us over there to show us actually what style was. So, um, I think that's the word for it. Um, anyway, so there's lots of, lots of work that needs to be done. If you look at the slide that is just reflective of the mill and the buildings, um, around the mill, uh, guttering, you have to have guttering so the water drains appropriately away from the building and the bricks don't decay. Uh, simple things like that that need to be done, uh, pretty immediately to keep, um, the properties safe and, and that sort of thing. Um, Lenora, do you want to tell us a little bit about Millfest, um, the celebration of the mill?
Yes, absolutely. We had a fantastic Millfest. We were so happy to be back after taking two years off due to COVID. Um, I had sent out feelers to my schools and to my demonstrators just to see how much interest there'd be. I didn't even know schools would be able to do field trips. But we had really a tremendous response. It wasn't little bit smaller than we were in 2019, but that was okay because we were a smaller staff and it was, it was about all that we could do. So, um, we had, um, 630, uh, kids and adults on the grounds, um, for Millfest for Kids Day. And then on, um, Millfest itself, on that Saturday, we gave tours to 340 people. Um, that's, we're just, you have to be at least 13 and older to do the mill tours. Um, so on the grounds during the, for the rest of the day, um, we didn't do tickets this year. We did it by donation, so it was a little bit harder to, um, keep track of. But we think we had in the neighborhood of, um, at least 450 people on the grounds, um, during the day on Millfest. And we did it just for Saturday. Um, we didn't do Sunday this year because we were a little bit short on mill guides. And it was about all that they could do to do Friday and Saturday. But we had a great, great day, and it was great to be back.
Thank you. So the, the property of the mill is actually anchored by the mill on one end and the Swedish Pavilion on the other end. And there's a lot of stuff in between, but those two properties really kind of anchor the, the area. And I remember as a, as a small tot, the King of Sweden coming to Lindborg and standing before the, uh, Swedish Pavilion. And that's an image that's stuck with me. And so I feel really compelled, um, to, to help preserve that place and also the mill. Uh, my grandfather worked at the mill in the early 50s, and I didn't really even know that until just several years ago. But I feel like these two properties have such, uh, great impact on our community and such a great, um, historic connection to who we all are and what we're all doing here today. Um, towards the progress and the positive trends, if you look at our revenue sheet, you can see that the revenue has been increasing pretty much regularly, um, over the last, uh, over the last few months. And we're really proud of that, given, um, the very small scale staff that we have and the opportu, limited opportunities that we've had to, to expand. But, um, last year, um, this, this body made a commitment and investment of $50,000, um, in, in terms of financial support to the Old Mill. And we would just ask that you consider this year an increase of $10,000 and consider a $60,000 investment, um, and commitment. Um, the word that I used in the slide is gift because it would be a gift to our nonprofit to have that level of support from all of you to help keep things moving forward. Um, any questions from any of you?
Michael, first of all, the, thank you for being here and for your work and, uh, we appreciate that, Lenora's. Um, the January, February revenue, uh, is obviously more than a typical month. Or I guess actually February.
Right. We received in January, I believe, the, um, payment from the county. And then, um, I think in February is the payment that we first, first cap of the city, payment of 25,000.
Okay.
We also received some income from the county for storing the archives, the historic records of the county.
Yeah, is that, that's, that's stored in the basement of, um, and the county? It's, it's, uh, records that it's owned by the county?
Yes, they are the county's records, and they are stored and managed by Lenora.
Okay. Okay, so you, so that you received some basically rental.
Rent. Yes.
Okay. Questions? Uh, remember, last time we talked about this and did the 50,000, the discussion was more that that was to get things up and going so you guys could try to secure grant funding and become autonomous. Um, it seems that now it's being kind of presented as we did that. We're going to continue to do that forever? Is that kind of anticipation? And given the revenues I see on there, it seems like the majority of the revenue you guys are receiving is from the city and the county and not grants and other additional funding.
So there has been, um, there has been grant applications that have been submitted. Some of them have been awarded, some of them have not. Um, we do not have professional development, uh, grant writing staff at this point. Um, so, and we have a staff of...
We have two.
Staff of two, um, that are, are very busy. Um, yeah, it would be wonderful to have continued ongoing support from the city of Lindborg and from the county as well, um, forever and ever. I don't know that we can count on that, but it would be great. Um, at this point, uh, we are still an infant, [laughing] learning to crawl. And, um, with, with, uh, continued investment and, um, you know, from, from this entity, we could potentially hire a development staff. from this entity, we could potentially hire a development staff that could do some grant writing and fundraising and all of that kind of stuff. We know that that's something we have to have in our
Do you believe we'd have to have a dedicated person that just does that?
Yes.
Because I know the city, I think we can cannibalize internally and have like Holly and some other department people can do that additionally. Now, the other question I have is you had some grants that were approved but not yet funded? Or not not approved yet?
We do not have any grants that have been approved. We had applied for a net grant, which we did not receive. So we do not have any that one.
I know that foundation is typically giving out pretty substantial amounts. Steve, how bad curiosity assume it's right public record? And how much were you asking for from the net foundation?
The last grant application on the line, I believe it was $120,000. That was for the pavilion windows and shutters.
Have you, are you planning to reapply for that next time?
Yes, we will be, I don't know if it will be for that specific thing, but yes, we will be applying for that.
We do have several board members that are proficient in grant writing. And, you know, we all try to pitch in on those and do those in our spare time. We are all volunteer board members.
Thank you also for being here and your efforts down there. We appreciate it. That's another piece of our wonderful puzzle called Linsborg. I guess with an ask of this much from council, I would, would there be a chance we could, I don't know. I'm assuming you have the a budget of what it takes to operate the facilities in a year. And then on top of that, capital improvements and fixing all these problems you have. Are we close to breaking even or are we have a confidence level that says, yes, we're going to be able to do this? And how, if not, how big is that gap? I mean, I'm not asking you tonight, but I would like to see that before I really have an opinion.
Sure, and that's absolutely something that we can provide. I didn't include it in the slide, but yes, we do have a budget. We have an operating budget. And we we don't, what we don't have is really an idea of how much it's going to cost to fix the whole place. It is badly neglected for many, many years. I believe that we can get there. I mean, the the board directors is very, very committed to making this thing go. It's going to have to get smaller for a little bit before it can get bigger. But we we have to have additional staff is really the very bottom line at this point. We have to have another staff person that can be dedicated to doing fundraising work or or it won't be successful. We have to have somebody admirable. Would you like for me to email those documents to to Roxy if you can look at that at some point or?
Yes, I think I think financial information that you believe would be helpful. The council, of course, won't be making any decision this evening, one way or another. But you would like counsel any direction that you have any additional information that you would like to request? If if you know this evening or if not, you can take that request later. But yeah, I think that would be very helpful.
So the the short of that is that we have a nice bank account at this point because of some funds that were intended for the old mill that the that the county had been hanging on to. So those have come. And then we have gotten recently some funds from the Greater Swinata Community Foundation, which holds our endowment and all of those kinds of things. But but that's like our, it's like our checking account at this point. And we'd be happy to provide that information to your profit and loss or whatever you'd like, so.
Council, what about the work?
I I would appreciate seeing the the more detailed financial details as well. But I just want to go on the record as saying, I think this is very much in the it takes money to make money stage of the old mill. And I think this is a really important asset to our community that we need to really consider supporting. Certainly, none of us wants to sign on to supporting the mill for perpetuity. But I think I think it's important that we really think about ways that we can help get them off on their feet. Because, I mean, it is true that we have some great resources within the city that can pitch in on grant grants. But I think probably Holly would agree that to really get big grants, it's not it's not a skill that the average person can just pitch in and and really be long term successful at. So again, I would second the mayor's thanks for your work to you personally, Michael, and the rest of the committee, and we've been more appreciative of you for all these years. Thank you very much for presenting this to me.
Councilwoman, question? Again, I'm going to echo a lot of what's been said here because I value the old mill and the experiences it provides for people. And also, it's just just some of the facelift stuff that's taken place. The main gallery is so much more inviting than it than it was for many, many years. And so that kind of work, I think, allows it to be something that connects well, that people can connect well with upon entry. I I think that's really important. The culturaldata.org and the number here about each dollar invested is $8.85 for Linsborg. I'm not sure I understand that.
Basically, the for every dollar that is contributed to the mill, there is an $8 return to the community. And that people that come here, they aren't just coming to the mill and leaving. They're also coming to the downtown shops or eating at our restaurants. They're perhaps spending the night. They're staying at the campground, which directly, you know, there's bed tax or whatever that comes directly from the nights that stay. So all of those things, every person that comes to the mill, there is some, you know, direct income to the city of of Linsborg. And that is really just the return on kind of any tourism. Is that kind of $8.85?
And along those lines, then I think as you give us information, the budgetary information of, you know, visits aside from events such as Mill Fest, if you had that kind of data available, that would be useful, I think, as well.
So what what are you asking for, visits? Like the number of people that visited here?
Of course, of the day, of course, whatever is a good measure for you at this point.
Yeah, we keep those stats every day. So we have every day, every month. And I've got those for several years, so different person.
Yeah, that would give us context, I think, to to look at the budgetary issues as well. Councilwoman, Cal?
Two things. One, talking about that, just thinking about that, if we did get that one service Holly was talking about, we'd be able to see what people were in that area at that time. And we'd be able to compare like how much traffic and visitors the old mill brings in over a year compared to, say, another event that's nonprofit to ask for funds like Hillings Fest or or other different things in Castiel. Well, Swim Meets bring in this much return on investment. That brings in that to help better justify how much money they're allocating to each event. That way, we're not sitting here going, well, this event got, you know, $80,000 and this one only got 10, but brings 10 times the amount. You know, I mean, at least give us some way to maybe possibly quantify some of this stuff. Because that's one of the biggest problems that I've always had with the nonprofits. How do you quantify the return on investment to a degree, even though it's not all numbers? It's cultural, historical and all that. But still, it's nice to at least have something. Another thing I was thinking about was they mentioned Wi-Fi. Do we currently have fiber or anything ran down to the pool at this point in time? Because I was going to say, if we had Wi-Fi, you know, if we ever had fiber ran down there, then there'd always be an opportunity to piggyback or something off of that. But it sounds like not sadly.
Go ahead.
I know, I've lost track of time. Could have been first this year, could have been last year, I don't remember. I know you did a start of a membership drive. And I'm just curious, did we get much support from the community during that drive? Or I have no idea. I know we participated, but I don't know if anyone else did. I'm just curious.
We we did, we had great support. This is an infant, so we had about $10,000 in response to to that, which is which is really, really great. But when I talk about the mill being in its infancy, that's where we are. $10,000 in revenue from sort of the annual appeal is not enough to keep the mill going, so.
Any idea how many members out of that 10?
I believe it's around 150.
I'm I'm just curious.
There's lots of, there's lots of work to do.
Further questions from council? Seeing no further questions, thank you both for being here and the work that you do.
Thank you guys.
And thank Jim all forces, yeah. He's got a, he's got a big job trying to
Staff of two.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will turn our attention to the item C, substation transformer project. And I will call on Chris Van Womar, Public Works Director. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Bring to you tonight kind of an update as far as the transformer project substation. We came to you in March for for an approval for the master service agreement, approved that. Mike Schmodder with Kami in States is here this evening. He has been working diligently on putting numbers together, putting specs together so that we can move forward with this project. So ultimately, tonight, we're going to look for a motion to approve the specification so we can go out for bids on the new substation transformer. But I wanted Mike to give you a thorough update of what he's been working on, some of the different items of this project, and some of the important factors as far as pricing with the wholesale distribution charges. If something were to happen with the current transformer and it would have to be replaced and where we would be with that. That's kind of one of the major components with this from a dollar standpoint. If something does happen there, I'll let Mike kind of go through that with you. Rod Shragi is also here, the electric superintendent. So if you have any questions for him as well, be more happy to answer them. But I'll let Mike kind of go through the project and explain some of that.
Hey, welcome, Mike.
Thank you. With Len is organized as Chris's. I put together kind of outline for you, I want to go over. If this gets too thick, you just throw something at me. I put together, this is a one line of your existing system that shows out the West Star Transformer is on the top and how it flows into your system. You have four circuits coming out of it right now, east, west and central. And then they're born in the elevator. The next, I put another one line behind it that has the red on it. Would show the additional work that have to be done. We'd be moving the meter set or Evergy would have to come in and put a meter set on the 345 with their transmission system. And we remove the meter set that's on the substation side. We would be purchasing and installing a new tra, a second transformer and then purchasing the transformer that Evergy currently has at the substation. So the red, red basically shows the new equipment. And then the third one line shows the the system, once the second transformer is in, you could split half your load, put half of it on the existing transformer. The way the substation is laid out, the east and west circuit would be on the existing transformer and the central circuit as well as the elevator would be on the new transformer. There's there's two sight plans. One shows the existing foundation layout and steel structure of the setup. And the one behind it shows the we remove the fence to the south, extend the fence to the south, add the new transformer and the and the breakers. The nice thing about your substation is you have two spare breakers right now. So the low side breaker, we could repurpose the foot that you currently have. It's a good working word, we make sure and maintain it. But so we have to buy a transformer, we have to lie high side breakers and switches and stuff. And that purchased the transformer from Evergy. I put together a scope of work, this is kind of the detail, step by step of all the pieces of work that would need to happen. And there's also, which I apologize, I thought I spoke to Chris, but I realized that I didn't believe in that. There is a detailed transformer specification that we would send out to give pricing on new transformers. And that's literally almost half of the cost of the budget period. And if we were to send it out late this week or early next week, we could have pricing back. I put it late July, probably early August is probably realistic. And that's when we'd be looking to make a real decision as far as spending dollars. There's no point in buying the transformer unless you're planning on doing the rest of the project. We've put a budget together for you. Chris asked me earlier how confident I was in the numbers. I did ask for a budget number on the transformers since last week. So I'm pretty confident in that. The rest of the stuff is equipment we we normally purchase. By the by the time the transformer prices here, we could have for you, put the breaker and the switches and that sort of stuff would constitute. So we could have a major material pretty well lined out. So why do this? You had, you currently have a transformer with Evergy, it's fairly old. It's, if you get a failure last fairly your last month, a year, and that was for four hours? Yeah, it was about eight hours. About eight hours, okay. By any time to blow fuse, it's a procedure that they go through all the tests and test the transformer and make sure everything's good before they put it back in service. The key to having a second transformer would be that if anything went wrong with either transformer with a couple of switching operations, you could have everything back on in a matter of 15, 30 minutes. Because I ask the big guy back there. But I mean, you'd want to make sure that you weren't switching it for a problem. But you would open a breaker that that is on the low side of the transformer and close a breaker to tie the two sides back together and have it back on right away. It also makes it a lot easier to pull maintenance. Right now, if they do maintenance on the transformer, they have to bring in a temporary transformer. And there's a lot of costs associated with that. And it splits the load between the two transformers so that what Rod told me today, the transformer had 8,500 on it?
That was last Thursday.
And it's the high side of this tent, so it's it's running pretty well loaded. And you're fortunate, if your town's growing, we deal with a lot of towns that are nice. But eventually, it'll need to be bigger for a second, anyway. And the 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 key thing is you're paying Evergy, work real hard not to say West Star, Evergy, what they call wholesale distribution service charge. That is what they're charging you for the fact that they own that transformer. And your current cost is $554 a month. If you were to purchase that transformer and have them move the meter to the transmission side, that cost would go away. I don't think you'd want to do that unless you had the second transformer because then the risk is off the hook if something goes wrong with the transformer. But they are going through and systematically upgrading your old substation equipment, Evergy is. I'm going to a little town in northeast Kansas on Wednesday that just got the notice and their $270 a month charge is going to go to $4,500 a month. And they have less than 200 customers. It's it's going to be devastating. So if we did the math, they spent about $800,000 by the time they bought a transformer, did the work and put it in there if that one was to fail. Your current charge of $554 based on their formula would go to $9,200 a month. The entire cost of this, the estimate I put together, basically 1.3 million. If you were to finance it at 4%, I know you can do better than that. I don't know what you have in the bank, maybe you can just pay for it. The that cost over a 20-year period would be $7,900 for 7880. So for less money than what you would end up paying if Evergy was to upgrade their transformer, you could have a second transformer, you would own it. And you'd have control over maintenance and that sort of thing. Now, as far as Evergy changing that transformer, it could be 10 years from now or it could be 10 months from now. Just depends on how it performs. So I know I made through a lot of stuff really fast there, but...
Questions? Questions from council?
Who will the RFP go out to?
I would send it, like I would visit with Chris and with Rod, but definitely would send it to Solom Corp. They do remanufacture transformers. And I would send it to a company called Virginia Transformer, that we bet they build new ones. Actually, their transformer would come out of Idaho, believe it or not, but have a plant in Virginia and in Idaho. And then anything else they want to add. Their traditional names like ADB and General Electric and some of those Siemens, they typically, anymore don't want to deal with a transformer this small. Yours would be a 7 slash 10 megawatt, to match the one you have here. Most of those until you get to 50 megawatts or above, they're just, they know they're not cost competitive, so they won't, they'll know better. So we had at least two to make bids. Yeah, well, I think we can get more than that, but I know those two will reply. And they've been pretty neck and neck here lately, so I would want to get it for both of them, just to keep everybody honest.
I have a question.
Yeah?
So on the proposed one with the red lines, on the right-hand side, this would still go through our wiring and through that, I'm assuming, switch assembly there? And then if we needed to basically pull everything from that side or to the other because we have a problem, you have kind of that jumper between the two that's red?
Correct.
Now, the original wiring to the right of that and all that stuff, does that, would that support the load of doing both of those?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Yeah.
Because I know we're changing on the other side and doing a new switch and everything, that'd be good?
Yeah, the actual, the breaker equipment that you have?
Yeah.
Ron was telling me you're pulling about 400, about 400 amps off the transformer, but the breakers themselves are rated for 1,200 amps, which is more than three times.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of making sure the wire between them, the actual bus bar that carries the current load, if in the steel is rated way higher than that. So it would only be the wire between them.
The wire that we have is...
And on that note, that tie, that tie wire either side of that tie breaker, that's run in parallel and we're only using one run. So there's already, there's already redundancy there.
Right.
Okay, further questions? Seeing no questions, thank you, Mike.
Go ahead.
For being here.
So do you want me to send that specification out?
We will, we will talk about that right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Chris, do you have anything else?
I do not. I just want to thank Mike for being here this evening. For all three. I think the emphasis has been brought out many times, the importance of what this project means, where we're at, and the time and fashion that we need to move this forward. So again, we're just looking for a motion to approve specifications and to move that forward this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Go ahead. Okay, council, we have a recommendation to, would be a motion to approve the substation specifications provided by KMEA Midstates and the authorization to move forward with the procurement of bids to facilitate the purchase of a new second substation transformer. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion to approve. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion on a motion. Seeing no discussion, I believe we need a roll call vote on this. I'll ask our city clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Shador?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes. Thank you, motion approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, guys.
I have one more question.
Yes, please.
The specification says that you have the right to refuse any of all proposals. So if we get these back and we decide you don't want to go forward, you're not obligated to spell them.
Thank you. Good point. Okay, thank you very much, guys, for being here. And next, council will turn our attention to item D, golf course maintenance cart. And I will call Beth Ferguson, our recreation director.
Good evening, how are you guys? Okay, so since I started, we had a golf cart out at the golf course that we use as our maintenance cart. This is somewhere between 2002 and 2006 golf cart that has been ran to carry weed eaters, shovels, tools all over the course. And as well as a Cushman maintenance cart that allowed our sprayer to be on back of that. Last year, towards the beginning of the summer, our golf cart is no longer working. And so we've been using the Cushman to basically spray, as well as using it around the course to carry supplies and equipment needed. We now have two part-time workers out there during the summer and it just makes it very difficult for them to both be doing their job, taking hoses around and watering the greens. And so we started looking for a new golf cart or a new equipment cart last year. As we have all said many times, it's been very difficult to find utility vehicles that we can just purchase and is efficient for us as well as cost-effective. And so we've been kind of looking, but when we find something, it's kind of an immediate, can you do it, can you not? And with the way that our city council meetings are set up, I can't always say yes right away. And so basically what I'm here for is to ask if we can go forward on a as-is basis of not going over $12,000 to find a maintenance cart that if we do find something, we can go ahead and move forward with it and give them the yes. We currently have a possibility and an opportunity in front of us right now. We have a John Neer maintenance cart that has been provided for us to look at. And so we're kind of holding off to see if that's a possibility. It is hopefully around $8,500, $9,000 at the most right now. And would do everything that we need it to do, load our equipment, be able to use, move the sprayer to the Cushman. And with this, just to let you know, the OSI, the Old Stuga Memorial Tournament has been offering a donation when they, when we found something. And so they would also be paying for at least half of this and go in with the city. And then the other half would be through the money that we got with the trade-in and the tractor. So it has been discussed to offer our old golf cart to see if we can get anything for that, but I'm guessing we probably can't. So I am recommending tonight a motion to approve the purchase of a utility vehicle when the right opportunity is found at a price not to exceed $12,000.
Counsel, are there questions for Beth?
Everyone's kind of wondered, like with the golf course, because you guys tend to use stuff different season than like snow removal is. If they want to be advantageous to get a UTV that could also be used by like Parks Over Rack or something for snow removal and things like that.
I believe, and I could be wrong on this, I think the parks actually have the snow removal connected to their mowers.
Right.
So then that...
Media over.
Yeah, there's mowing in our seasons a little bit at the same time. But I mean, obviously, right now, we share with Parks Department our mowers and when needed, we do. City Public Works comes out and helps us a lot right now, they're doing a big project. So we try to share and if anybody would need it not in season, they absolutely...
Well, the thought there would be to get a piece of equipment that would do snow removal much better than what they have, but also do what you're doing much better. And then you're using it when they don't need to use it. They only use it for snow and the rest of the time. But right now, we need something certain later, but maybe next time, that might be something that we'll pen to.
No, you have not to exceed 12,000. You're saying we could realistically be at 8,500 or 9,000. But the Old Stuga's going to pitch in half, so are we really looking at possibly $6,000 or are we even worse than that?
Or less.
Okay.
Further questions?
So is this kind of a, maybe with the Old Stuga, kind of a reimbursement, the city would purchase it upfront and then would be paid?
Correct.
So we still need to account for the whole amount, not every...
Correct. And that's what the cost of the 12,000 is in full now, so...
I do know that there, we're looking, it's lying, looking in, we've been told on many pieces of equipment at least a year out. So if you can find something, you need to jump on it, so I agree.
Further questions? Seeing no questions, thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation to approve. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second discussion on the motion to approve purchase of a utility vehicle when the right opportunity is found at a price not to exceed $12,000. Are there questions on the motion?
Just one, maybe a comment, although the piece of equipment that died may not have a lot of value, traded value, purple wave. I'm still amazed at what people will purchase, so that is a possibility to get a few bucks back maybe.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll have the city clerk do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Manfred Wey?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Thank you, council. The motion passes. We will turn our attention to item E, mail machine and folder, folder and inserer. And a call on David Hay, the finance manager. Welcome again, David.
Good evening. So the city has been contracting utility bill printing and mailing services for several years since we went away from the postcard. Some of you may remember. The setup has worked pretty well until recently, the process has changed and it's become more challenging to get the bills from our system to the vendor for printing. So after speaking with a few companies that are offering folding and mail machines, staff has decided to look at what it would take to bring the utility process back in-house. It takes roughly two to three hours per month to input the bills into the system and prepare them for processing. Bill cost is averaged around $1,500. That's not with the staff time, that's just what we're paying this other company to process those. Bringing the process in-house will reduce the time to about an hour and cost around $1,200 per month. The cost includes a lease of a folding machine and an automatic feed mail machine as outlined below. So the lease on the mail machine, it is expiring and currently we just have a very simple manual feed machine. It allows us to process though in-house without having to add stand to be able to wave and things like that. The machine that we had quoted is an automatic feed. The automatic feed will be vital if we're moving from monthly utility bill process in-house. We received quotes from three different companies. Our current company, which is Quadiant for Midwest Single Source, have the most competitive for the mail machine, $146.85 per month for 60 months. So based on the quote, it is cheaper to purchase, but the maintenance contract's only for three years. And if we lease it, it extends it for the full five years. And so without mailing, you know, he said usually it's a 5% or 10% increase on the maintenance contract, but without knowing that for sure, I felt better. Knowing that we had a machine that was leased, the other thing is, is if there's anything wrong with it and it's going to be an extended period of time, they'll bring us a machine to use in that instance if we're leasing. So the contract as proposed includes both the folder and the inserer to help assist with the processing of the utility bills. The machine will fold the bills or insert them into an envelope and then seal them. Processing the bills this way will be more efficient than folding them by hand. We will also be adding, or we will also be able to add any inserts or other items that we would want to with no additional cost. Currently, we pay roughly $200 each time that we want to do any type of single-page, black and white insert. The machine will also benefit other departments, including the CBB for folding their brochures. Currently, they have brochures that they create in-house and they are folding those by hand. HR for pay stubs during the summer, Roxy adds around 75 to 100, takes her about an hour to fold those, stuff them, get them processed. And then also utility brochures, we've moved away from doing some of our paper and made them into nice little brochures to talk about the different services that we do have to offer. I forgot to put it in there, but the cost for the folding machine is $118.04 for 60 months. And so the recommendation is a motion to approve the lease for the folding machine, mail machine from Quadiant Midwest Single Source in the amount of $15,863.40.
Are there questions from the council? David?
I've got 15, 893, you just said 15, 863?
I'm sorry, 15, 893, if I said 63 in this book.
Okay. I'm just too easily confused.
I understand.
I assume that $1,200 per month price is assuming the current price of paper and all that kind of stuff. Now, obviously, if we start doing this, we're going to have to buy that, a bulk amount of paper in the beginning. Is that going to exceed the discretionary expense? Do we need to end up making a motion for that?
Nope. Because we will have to get preferated paper, but we want to buy prices. The other thing is, is we approved the in-code upgrade and that in-code upgrade also will allow us to be able to mail bills out to our customers through email. So what our hope is, is we have roughly 1,800 bills that we're processing today. Our hope is, is to get that to the 500 mark once we're able to...
Okay, that was my question. Okay, but we think that this investment and all this equipment is still worthwhile for 500? I mean, like, that feels like a lot of money, because that's going to be a fixed cost at that point.
Correct. And I, I think because of the ability that it gives us in other departments, I think it definitely makes sense as far as the fixed cost that we'll have here versus the other.
And this, you said, I mean, this is an automated one, you said you stick a stack and it pulls them through?
Correct.
Chalk it up to be always amazing how much stuff costs.
Currently, we're paying about half that, so half of the cost is what we're paying currently for. And if we renew our machine just at that, and so we're paying about double per month for that to be able to have the auto feed.
Further questions?
We're encumbering the $15,000 because we're agreeing to a five-year contract, but we're not paying all that upfront.
Correct.
Okay.
Further questions from the council? Seeing no further questions, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Counsel, we have a recommendation to approve the lease for the folding machine, mail machine from Quadiant Midwest Single Source in the amount of $15,893.40. Is there a motion to that?
So...
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second discussion on the motion. Seeing no discussion, I'll ask our city clerk to please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Hebel?
Yes.
Presley?
Yes.
Corwin?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Shador?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes. Thank you, council. Motion passes. We will turn our attention to item 11, consecutive session. I do not believe we need one.
We do not.
Thank you. And item 12, is there other business that needs to come before the council this evening? Seeing no further business, we'd ask for a motion to adjourn. So... Second?
Second.
There are a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We are adjourned, thank you.